Information, Mr. Dwyer?
I just have it as Jones group, so I don't know who's who's who. Or what property you want to talk about.
So, yeah, we like to talk about the ten Rocky Hill Road. And the whirlwind landscaping company would like to purchase that in order to have their landscaping company there. And so I'm sitting with Chris Baxter and his wife Suzanne Baxter. So if anybody has any questions, please fire away.
Okay, well, there may be an issue there because it is zone residential agricultural. And a landscaping business is a business and is not permitted in that zone. So there's no residents on the site, so you can't make it a home occupation. Because you have to be actually living on the site to be a home occupation, a home business. So as far as the landscaping business moving there, I'm sorry to tell you that it probably can't be done.
Well, what about, um, it was going to be an ice cream place there. Was that approved?
The ice cream place was part of a farm stand and it was under state law. A farm and ice cream stand is considered a permitted use as a farm stand.
And then what about, um, you know, chapter forty eight, section three, if they're going to be doing twenty five percent of the business and horticulture and floral arrangements, things like that?
Well, the good question, the Barst, no, not Barstow. Yeah, Harry Barstow, when he had his landscaping business, he ran it as a home occupation out of his house. It was a home business or master landscaping. Um, they're both very similar to what you want to do. They were buying local stuff. Um, they got a variance. They were actually kind of almost a grant, but they were running it out of their house for years. And they finally ended up going to the zoning board for a variance to run it out of their house. Um, their location as a home business as well. So, um, just because you purchase goods like that, you've actually got to be drawing them yourself, part of it. The way that the way I believe the law is written. And so, I mean, I'm not trying to be mean here. I'm just trying to tell you what the, uh, the regulations are in Hadley. And it won't be a, it's not a permitted use. You could try for a zoning variance. But just be warned if you try for that, when there was a farm stand there. The neighbors, and I believe the neighbors are still the same ones living there, made a big deal about the farm stand being there and they tried to stop it. So I don't think they're going to be any more receptive to a landscaping business.
Any, any questions? Um, what would go there? What, what would be permitted? Because there's no place to really live there.
Another farm stand is about the only thing that can go there.
Okay.
The only business use, you could build a house there.
Right, yeah, you could say, yeah, you could put a build a house there if the lot is big enough. Well, I mean, that's, that's something if, like I said, to make it a home business, you'd actually have to live there.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Not really.
Not really.
I think we're all set. Does anybody have any?
I'm sorry to be the bearer of bad news.
Yeah, any suggestions?
Well, I mean, they're all, they're all expensive. That's the problem. I mean, you could buy it, tear it down and put a farm, put a house there and then be, you could qualify for a home business if you really wanted to be at that site. Or where do you, do you live in Hadley now?
Amherst.
Amherst.
Oh. Buy another house that are with a big lot in Hadley and go for the home business, home occupation.
The other factor there is, and let me just go to that parcel. That I think you, uh, do not have enough acreage to qualify for the agricultural exemption anyway.
Yeah. So three to five yards.
Three, um, five acres, yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah. All right. Thank you very much. It was worth a try. It's a beautiful spot. Um, appreciate your time.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
Uh, next up, we have Mr. Iser.
Good evening, everybody. I'm here this evening to submit plans for the twenty one Lawrence Plain Road, very small subdivision. I sent the PDF of the actual lot plan and I'm just want to make sure that I get everything else I need. Uh, it's been a while since we've done this, so I've got two sets of mailing labels. I've got two Form Cs. Is there anything else I need to, for paperwork to get to you?
How many sets of plans do you have, Randy?
Well, there's just one page. Um, so how many, how many copies do you want?
The electronic copies are good for the planning board, but I think the, uh, police chief and player probably each want a hard copy. So probably, and, and, and the town clerk, so maybe three, three hard copies.
All right, so I'll, I'll get, I'll make six, just so there's enough to go around.
Okay.
So six hard copies, two sets of mailing labels, two Form Cs, anything else?
I believe that, is it, you're going to go right for the definitive?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I mean, that should be it.
Okay, I'll, I'll, uh, put it in the planning board mailbox at town hall tomorrow.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll let you know when, when it's there, Jimmy.
Okay, okay. I'll, I'll put a date and I'll let you know what the, the other fees are, if there's any, okay.
Okay, so can we, can we set a date?
We'll try for December with Mr. Dwyer. Here we go.
So December five is, uh, you know, a month out. The one problem I have with that is I know we're really crunched in here with trying to talk to Cancomia and do a public hearing.
I'd say December.
You can push it out. I, that's fine, whatever, whatever you, whatever you need to do.
Let's do it the nineteenth then.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, it gives us a chance to, uh, collect any other loose ends.
That's fine. And do you want it at town hall, Jimmy, or you want me to bring it to you?
Um, why don't you bring it to me?
Okay, I will do that.
Everything now, I can, I can sign and could get you, let, let, make sure everything's good. Okay.
All right, thanks. It's all I have for that.
Next up is Mr. Reedy.
Thanks, Mr. Dwyer. Hi, everybody. Um, two items. First one is, uh, A and R for two lots over on Moody Bridge Road, Bill Handrich's property. Uh, I had sent in to the planning board, I want to say it was Thursday or Friday last week of that A and R. Um, this is land which is not, uh, part of the APR that, uh, Bill had done. I want to say it might have been last year at this point. I'm happy to share my screen if you want to take a look at it if you haven't seen it yet.
I did send it around, but yeah, let's go ahead and, um, do a quick share.
Okay.
What's the number on Moody Bridge, Tom?
That's a good question. Fifty, I think. It's coming out of this, so if you can see my screen, uh, Handrich's house down here, this land was part of the APR. Uh, this land was excluded. There's a lot of lines here. Sherman Frederick had put this together. Sorry, Randy. Um, and it's this lot here, lot three, and then this lot here, lot four.
Those aren't where the bank is real steep on Moody Bridge. Is that correct?
Good question, Jim.
I don't think so, but I can't tell you, Jim, definitively.
Because if it's the real steep bank, then that's considered not accessible, easily accessible, and it would take up. Well.
Illusory access.
Right, yeah. And I think even if you have a chance to go take a drive down there to see this, I meant to. So I'm, I'm hesitant to sign this only because of that, Tom. Um.
Let me, how can we maybe do this?
There's no grading plan.
No, there's not. And that's what I was thinking, Mark, is that I, you know, I wonder if, you know, even, you know, it's, I think if it's steep, it's uphill, right? I don't think it's downhill, if, if my memory serves.
Steep up, yeah, steep uphill, yes.
Which you could always cut and retain.
I want to say there's probably a ten to twelve foot bank there.
If you would need to, I think you could probably cut and retain, um, if you needed to. And I, I don't know that I reserved access off of here. Um, I'm not sure that I did, so I think access would have to come off of here. Let me see if I stop share and then maybe I can go to a Google, um.
Can you go to Google Earth, Tom?
What I'm trying to do, yeah, Randy, exactly.
Do you know how to, you know how to do elevations?
I know how to do the street view. I don't know that I know elevation.
Well, if you take your cursor and put it where you think the top of the bank is, it'll give you an elevation. And then if you take it and put it at the, at the road, it'll give you another elevation. It's down in the lower right hand corner.
Okay.
It'll give you, uh, coordinates and elevation.
Let me get to.
Big Brother Google has all the info.
All right, let me.
Mr. Quinlan, do you know if that's at the high end of the bank or not?
I do not.
Okay. Practically across the street.
I know on the curve, it does get pretty steep. I used to run that.
Yeah, that's just that I'm not sure which, which, you know, the, the, yeah.
Cause it kind of goes down into a hollow and then it comes back up again.
All right, so I'm looking at this the right way. This should be the house. This is the barn. Field here. And then it looks like, it looks like the lots are in this general area here.
Yes, I, I agree with that.
So then if I, Randy, because I'm not as sophisticated as, if I go down to there. So it looks like there may be some, Jim.
Well, yeah, but it's, it's there, there's part, further up the road, not so much there. I mean, it's like, it's almost a, uh, very steep. This is going to relatively, there's some, uh, how would I say this? Reasonable slope there that you can actually climb up if you had to.
Okay.
It's not like a sheer wall as it, as it is further back.
Right.
Yeah, down, down by the brook, it's really bad.
That's not concerning, that and where those, where the, where the foliage trees are, that's really steep and really.
That was my question. Where, where is, how far back?
It shows on the plan, Joe. It's, it's not, it's not part of the two lots he's showing you.
Right, right. Let me, yeah.
And even, even if you had, had to do a switchback kind of thing, come at an angle and come across the frontage at an angle, you could, I'm sure you could, uh, access over that stuff.
Right, yeah. I, I, yeah.
Well, it's three and four.
It seems like further south, right, right? The, the next lot down is where it really starts to get steep. Yeah, right in through there.
Uh, and you can see the brook.
Yeah, I got it.
Yeah, that's where it's really steep. As you get further up, it's, it's more, it, I mean, there's a reasonable bank. But there's also enough room to put a, uh, like Randy said, uh, if you would, a zigzag driveway in there will overcome it.
Yes.
Okay. I'm good. Any other questions?
What's the frontage on those?
Uh, yeah, you have to do some math. So fortunately I didn't before because they've, surveyors just identified L four, L five, L six. So L four, L five, L six is two hundred and twenty-five here. And then L seven, L eight and L nine is two hundred and six point one eight. And that's, they're over here. So you'll see four, five, six, add those three together, seven, eight, nine, add those three together, and that's what you end up with there. So two hundred feet, and I think it's the zoning district is two hundred feet of frontage and forty thousand, because I, I think it's in, uh, uh, aquifer protection overlay.
Yes, yeah, there's any aquifer.
So forty thousand square feet plus the two hundred feet of frontage.
Yeah, so there lots of plenty big enough in the frontage.
Plenty there, yeah.
Motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
You have a second?
Second.
Motion second. Follow, any other discussion? Fall in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, you can, Tom, you can bring him to either Joe, Bill and myself. We'll sign the plan for you.
Okay. And I think I owe you a fee as well, because I don't think we had submitted anything, so.
Um. How much frontage did you have?
Uh, altogether, two twenty-five and two oh six, so four thirty-one.
You got another lot there too, don't, don't you, Tom? Lot two? Or is that pre-existing?
That's pre-existing, yeah. They weren't looking to carve that off. That was through the original APR one.
All of thirty dollars filing fee, Tom.
How much?
Thirty dollars even.
I love Hadley. Well, thanks a lot and thanks to Randy for the help as well. Um, second, second item on, uh, for me at least is, uh, Paul Benjamin subdivision, uh, at their place. Um, this was one, there's a, there's a covenant on it. Some of the lots have been released, not all of the lots. And I'm not here asking for all of the lots. Um, there was a letter that was provided to the planning board, I want to say back in two thousand and nine by an engineer certifying that everything was fine. Obviously, time is fast between two thousand and nine and two thousand and twenty-three, so I asked Paul, you know, thanks to Jim and, and Bill. Uh, he talked to the DPW super and got a punch list essentially of what needed to be completed. And it's really for the town to accept it, even though that's not what we're asking for. We're just asking right now for the release of the covenant. And then in the future, likely, uh, we'd be back to ask for ultimately support for it to go to town meeting for the town to accept it. And so out of that punch list, um, there's three things that haven't been completed. One of them is exposing a water box, which was just paved up too, so it's just cutting it out and picking up the water box. Two is clean and repair catch basins and drain manholes. Ninth has to quote, which was, I think, I was a little bit surprised by the price, because it wasn't very high, and then, uh, sweep the street. Um, Paul's already done some crack repair. He would do crack repair again in the spring. Um, before he'd ask the town to accept it. So, so those are the items. These lots have been selling for, you know, recently, and we've got it under contract for a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Uh, so the last lot, probably the trophy lot, if you will, at the end of the cul-de-sac, we would put up as collateral and then ask for the, the balance of the lots, which haven't yet been released, to be released. And so, you know, ostensibly, that's at least a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. I think the, the quote for the drain manholes, catch basins was a couple of thousand dollars. Even if you're, take double that, you know, you're at five thousand dollars. The water box exposure isn't going to be much, and then the street sweeping isn't going to be much either. So we thought with a hundred and eighty, you were sufficiently collateralized, should these items not get done. And again, this isn't for the town taking, this is just for the covenant.
So which lot will remain?
A lot ten.
So the top coat has been put on.
I believe so, yes. Probably some time ago too, Joe.
Okay.
But they've been doing a good job of maintenance, kind of as they go, crack repair, uh, sealing it, et cetera.
So this was a situation that when it was completed, it probably did come up to town standards. But because no one asked to have it, uh, addressed at that time, it has deteriorated below town standards. So I'm okay with, uh, releasing all but one lot.
Uh, just for the record, Mr. Benjamin did ask the selectman to accept that as a town road before there was a house on it. And the selectman declined to put it on the warrant because there was no house on it. He says, we're going to accept a town road that doesn't have any houses, and they didn't want to do that.
Makes sense.
But that was a period, obviously.
Yeah, and people are obviously paying attention. Randy brought, you know, his very small subdivision, just, I would have to imagine it's close to, if not, you know, stone's throw from here.
So kind of addressing the two newer members on the planning board. And, uh, if this were under the old subdivision regulations, uh, we would probably have to release all the lots if these catch bases were, were up the stuff. But now we can hold one lot until it's accepted by the town meeting. So that's what we're doing.
Thank you, Joe.
Okay, Mr. Dwyer, you're making a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to release all but lot ten.
I'll say.
Your second, and second, any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Great. Thanks so much, Bill. I can work with you on, if you want us to, if you want me to draft that lot release, I'm, I'm happy to do it, because I think lot ten had been released, so we're putting it back under covenant. So if you just send me an email, I'm happy to help, however you want. Thanks, guys. Good seeing you.
No.
Uh, next up is, uh, Brett McGrath.
Hello. Um, I am coming from, I own My Health Matters Fitness in Hadley, just, um, popped up in October for, uh, the Mill Valley Suites there, Unit C. And, um, I just wanted to ask permission to put two lawn signs out. They're eighteen by twenty-four inches. Um, I can tell you what they say, but they're basically just bringing attention to the space being open. Um, and I'd be putting them out by the sign, uh, post that's already out there.
Where is this?
So it's, um, Mill Valley Road, one Mill Valley Road in Hadley.
There, you're going to add to the sign, the signs, I'm, I'm, I'm not following what you want to do.
It's okay, yeah.
She's talking about lawn signs.
Yeah, so two lawn signs that just have the little, um, it's not the vinyl A-frames. It's just like, um, a sign, and then it, you put the metal pieces into it, and then you can just stick it into the ground from there.
How, how long would they be out there?
Um, I would probably keep them out there until it starts snowing, um, just to bring attention to the space.
Okay. Um. We could give you, I'm, I'm not sure we can give permission, if we could give you one temporary long, one permit to put out one sign. But I don't think we want to, we're not going to do two. Not, that's my opinion.
Okay.
Uh, because you only have roll frontage on one road, right?
I have, uh, Mill Valley, and then I have Russell Street, just around the corner there, like this.
Okay, I've your, your address is Mill Valley Road? That's where your business is?
Yes, technically our entrance is one Mill Valley Road, yes.
Okay. Um, and it's, it's, the way that road is even shaped, one road sign is visible from Mill Valley Road or Russell Street.
Mm-hmm.
I don't have a problem with one temporary sign for like a month or two, but if it was permanent, we would say no.
Okay, yeah, I definitely wouldn't make it permanent. It's just going to be there just to bring attention for, we opened in October. So I just wanted to bring attention to the space being open, and then we would pull it, um, I can definitely pull it by December if that works for you.
Anybody else on the board have questions, comments about that?
Well, that's a reasonable, uh, I think, compromise, and I applaud a plotter for coming in and trying to be upfront. Because there are a lot of signs going up now that the, the waving flags, I call them, they just stick them out there and, uh, they're obviously not a permitted use.
What's the dimension of it?
Eighteen by twenty-four inches.
How much, by twenty, twelve by twenty-four?
Eighteen by twenty-four.
Or eighteen by twenty-four.
So it's three.
Name of the business, you said?
My Health Matters Fitness.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve one temporary sign not to exceed eighteen inches by twenty-four inches through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thanks so much.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Next up, Mr. Dwyer?
Up is, are they still here? Uh, yeah, just let me check something. Um, uh, okay, the, um, yeah, the next person in is actually with, uh, PVPC, so, uh, let me just take that. Uh, Tom Corbett's here, but I think that, uh, I just wanted to see what, uh, we talk about, about, uh, battery storage. He was here, okay. Um, everybody else I recognize as being either connected with PVPC uh, or with our next agenda item, which is a brief presentation from the Housing and Economic Development Committee on, um, a proposed, uh, housing forum. That would be Molly and, uh, Justin Peeland.
Okay, thanks, Bill. Um, so thanks for your audience tonight. I just wanted to let you know that we um, did the same presentation in front of the select board, um, at our last select board meeting. Um, again, a reminder, the Housing and Economic Development Committee were appointed by the select board. Um, but obviously we have a, a pretty strong dotted line to the planning board as well. So as we've said in the past, we never want to get out in front of either um, elected board without, without doing a check-in. So, so I think that's the, the goal tonight. Um, so Justin, uh, is here with me tonight. And one of the, um, items that we've been discussing for a while on the Housing and Economic Development Committee, um, is, you know, where do we go from here once the housing production plan was completed? Um, so I think, uh, Jim, uh, is certainly fully aware of this, but part of the outcome of the housing production plan included kind of recommended next steps. And one of those next steps was for the town to have an, um, and I want to emphasize educational forum, um, discussing housing in Hadley. So, uh, we've been working on coming up with an outline for that. Um, and again, you know, Justin did the lion's share of the work on this, so our Housing and Economic Development Committee, um, has approved the outline. Um, again, it's gone to the select board. The select board is, uh, generally, um, are actually unanimously in agreement with the, the concept here, and we wanted to present that to you tonight. So if it's okay, Bill, I was going to turn this over to Justin.
Okay, I apologize if my voice is a little hoarse today. If, if it's helpful, I can, I can pull up the abstract that we wrote and presented to the planning board, uh, or I could just talk through it. Would it be helpful to see?
Why don't you pull it up? I think I did circulate it around to everyone, but, uh, just touch the high points.
All right, bear with me, um. I don't use Zoom all that often. Okay, let me know if you can see this. Okay, great. Uh, so as Molly mentioned, uh, what we're really doing here is reacting to, uh, some of the survey questions from the housing production plan. Uh, and, uh, we mentioned this to the select board as well, but, uh, that survey, I believe, from what I've heard, uh, is, has some of the highest response rates of, you know, any survey that we've put out to date. Um, so it's, it's pretty reflective, we think, of, of the general sentiment. Uh, and of that, there was one question that asked specifically, um, there's a list of, of options and asked them to rank the priorities for the town. Uh, and items one and two in this list, uh, improve regulations and zoning bylaws and provide housing to support all socioeconomic levels. Uh, those are really things that you can't, can't be achieved without town vote. Uh, but item three, educate the public on housing issues, is something that's well within our control. Uh, so the, uh, Housing and Economic Development Committee kind of talked through what that means. Uh, and based on some of the survey responses, uh, we kind of provided this abstract of how we might envision this, uh, forum to go. Uh, so basically, the, the proposal is to do a two-session forum, session one being largely information, um, and we would host it kind of as a panel style, identifying particular experts in their fields to be able to contribute their opinions and, and facts and data. Um, and then session two, after people have had a chance to digest, maybe people who needed to watch it virtually online after the fact. Uh, would be about a sort of question and answer session, uh, potentially moderated, uh, some some format that might help to focus the conversation. Uh, so with. This document, we kind of proposed an outline and then uh highlighted in yellow are. People that we had identified in the Housing and Economic Development Committee as as. Potentially uh best suited to talk on these issues, although this is still open, um, this is very much an outline proposal, not an actual app. Excuse me, an actual outline. Uh, so. For the forum on the information starts with kind of an introduction, which we were thinking maybe Pioneer Valley Planning Commission could provide, um, which is kind of tells us like. Why are we here? You know, the the recap on the housing production plan, the survey responses and things like that. Uh, item two would be a. Overview of town government, which is kind of a recap from a previous forum that I believe the sec- select board had held. Uh, but basically trying to just uh quickly identify the process for uh town vote and, you know, making changes to zoning, that sort of thing. Uh, and then the third item would be, uh, hopefully somebody from the planning board, we've kind of put in Bill here. Uh, would be to talk about the current zoning and zoning bylaws and the rezoning process, just to. It just time to be an in-depth conversation, but just to kind of set the stage. Uh, and then moving down, uh, this is where kind of the meat of the presentation is, and this is to talk about, you know, some of the constraints and opportunities for. Developments in Hadley and uh, you know, we are talking specifically about housing because it's one of the focuses of our. Committee, but the um, you know, the the content here really spans a number of fields economically, socially and and uh. You know, from a housing perspective. But we would uh hopefully start with discussion about the master plan, um, you know, some of the findings from that plan. Move into school system and enrollment, which is an area that we uh had heard from a number of people is a an area of concern. Uh, so the idea here was that we can have. Uh, superintendent potentially just. Tell us from, you know, her experience, what the situation is with the school system as it relates to uh population and and number of children. Uh, and then move into infrastructure and services, which uh it was suggested that maybe the police chief or fire chief or TPW director might be best suited to talk about this. Uh, but the, you know, the sewer comes up a lot when we talk about new developments, this would be an opportunity to kind of. Outline what those constraints are and maybe what what some of the. Uh, opportunities or creative solutions that we're exploring might be. And then uh business development and our business and economic considerations, uh, this is kind of tied to. Some of the, there's a relationship between, you know, housing availability and um attractiveness to businesses and and there's a. Sort of a push and pull there that we want to try to address and Mark Howard has offered to. Uh, discuss these subjects, um, you know, with his background in economics, it makes sense to us. Uh, and then the final comment or the final item here would be uh social and community considerations, which um. It's a real little bit of a broad conversation, but we're trying to sort of focus in on, you know, housing access and equity and. You know, the different types of housing scales, different uh barriers that there might be staying in town, whether that's aging in place or potentially young families looking to relocate. Uh, and then uh trying to talk a little bit about shifting demographics from some of the last census results. Um, and then the the session two here, as we talked about, would be some form of moderated question and answer discussion. Um, but the idea here, and we stressed this with the select board, is that, you know, we want to try and create a, you know, a session or a forum that's. Uh, just about education, it's about information sharing and um trying to be as as unbiased as possible, we're not, we're not trying to suggest. Solutions or or answers, uh, but the hope is that we can provide enough information so that if and when any of these. Issues come up for a town vote, people have the information they need to make an informed decision. So with that, I can uh. I can't read any chats, but if there's any questions, feel free to chime in.
No, that sounds good.
You can take it down, I.
Yeah. Just at one point, what do you mean by improve the zoning, uh, like the zoning needs to be improved in what way?
That was one of that. That was one of the suggestions that people want, uh, that was one of the responses to the housing production plan. So this proposal that. Isn't talking about that, this proposal is doing the third part about. Education.
You you said that. You had a high percentage responding to the housing production plan survey. What percentage was that?
I think it was like two hundred and fifty-seven responses or something like that, uh, I put it in. I think we're what, five thousand?
I would say statistically that. The response wasn't significant.
No, and I I actually do agree with that, and I I made a comment to the select board about, you know, how we engage with. Our residents, but I I think from what I, this is just what I've been told, I don't know this for sure, is that the two hundred and seventy-six people is a. A high number of a response rate for. Something like this in Hadley, that other surveys.
You should have qualified that to say that in spite of that, it was not a significant statistical response.
Correct?
Well, isn't he saying that? You know, for this kind of a non, it, you know, it's not like an election when we might get twelve hundred.
No. You can't, you can't base policy on two hundred out of five thousand, okay, that's my point.
Yeah, we're not, we're not talking about policy, we're talking about just educating the public and.
I think this is all about, I think this is all about policy, but that's my opinion.
Okay.
Yeah, well, we are, we are, we are trying our best to make sure that this is unbiased and, you know, fa- as factual as we can make it. As an example, we, our committee had met with the superintendent to ask some of the questions about. School enrollment and whatnot, and and even we had learned some things from that conversation that I think we had all made assumptions about, so. Uh, the hope here is that we can dispel myths and maybe. Provide enough information for people to make informed decisions.
Well, my opinion is to go up. Go up. We just heard uh. Tom Reedy say that a building lot in Halle is going for a hundred eighty thousand dollars. Enough said.
So we're just looking, um. Really, tonight, just to to ask the planning board, um, just. You know, to allow us to continue, the idea would be to. Uh, I think right now we're talking about maybe uh uh late January, early February timeframe for this. Um, and again, as I'm just noticing that Ken Comey is on the call, we threw his name on there as a guest speaker, and of course, we haven't even talked to Ken about it yet because. We didn't want to get in front of the elected boards, but. Uh, so again, we can, we can work on who the speakers are and the exact content, but we're just looking for agreement and principle, and if there are any. Is any opposition to having an educational forum, obviously, we want to hear that from you.
I'll make a motion to support further development of a housing forum to be presented by the Housing and Economic Development Committee.
And I would second it.
Motion and second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate.
Yeah, thanks very much for your time.
Go west. Keep it up.
Uh, Alan, uh, I I, oh. Sorry, I apologize, I overlooked Alison Ibbotson.
Hi, good evening.
Hi.
Can you get?
Hi.
I'm back with uh the Homewood Suites, um, revised uh. Design for the signage for the wall sign, uh, we shrunk it to the sixty-four square feet.
And that was for which place?
Uh, Homewood Suites.
Okay.
At three forty Russell Street.
That's the sign on the front of the building?
That is correct. Yep.
Who's the address again?
Uh, I think it's three forty Russell Street.
We have a picture of the sign, by.
We did get one in, I sent it around, but if, can you share your screen?
I.
Or shall I?
Uh, I don't. I haven't read, I don't know if you guys can see, I don't have it on my. My phone.
Sign is sixty-four square feet.
That's what.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
We originally, we originally had it at sixty-nine point two eight, um. And we brought it down to sixty-four square feet to meet the regulations.
That that faces Russell Street?
It is the south elevation. Let me see if I have it, it's.
I have it, uh, hang on a second, I'll uh.
Where's that in the courtyard?
Yeah, it's pretty far back.
I mean, does that, that, does that face the Aldi parking area?
I think that's right, Jim.
Yeah, I think, I believe that does, okay. Cause it two doors right below to the main entrance, correct?
That's correct, yep.
Okay, so that faces the Aldi parking lot, that's why I just want, I just want to verify where it is located, that's all.
Yeah, of course.
I'm thinking that actually faces east, but I could be wrong.
It's. It's.
Yeah, that is where the Aldi parking lot is and and theirs as well.
Well, it says south elevation, which would face, wouldn't the south elevation face?
It's facing Russell Street, but it's like, it's behind another building. I don't know what the building is.
Facing Chipotle, isn't it?
It faces, it faces south.
Yeah, this is south, there's Chipotle and Firestone before you get there.
Okay.
And um. So this is actually. The backside of the building, you go around to the. You go around to the right. And you get into the the courtyard aspect of it.
Right, that's where the entry is.
That's where the entry is, so this is uh.
South facing.
This is the. That people see.
Right. From Route nine, it's more like the south flank.
Yes. Okay, that's fine.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion second, any discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, very good.
Any progress? Any progress with that Verizon, uh, I guess you're just representing the signs, just.
Yeah. I don't have any knowledge about Verizon. Thank you, guys, have a good evening.
Thank you, you too.
Thanks.
We to the public hearing now, Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Okay, I will read the announcement as it appeared in the newspaper. The Hadley Plan- Planning Board will conduct a Zoom public hearing on Tuesday, November seventh, twenty twenty-three, beginning at six forty-five P M. Purpose of the hearing is to review the application of In Green Gardens at two forty-three Russell Street for special permits. Site plan approval and business use in Aquifer. Said business is a landscaping business, plans are available by emailing planning@hadley@ma.gov. Um, or to see the town clerk published twice in the newspaper, September sixteen and twenty-three. And because there's probably quite a few people on this thing, I would uh. Say that anybody that wishes to speak, please be recognized by the chair before you speak. And the way it'll work is the. Town boards will have first dibs after the presentation to make comments, and then we'll open it up to anybody. Um, else on the Zoom call and everybody will get a chance to be co- be heard, and you can speak obviously more than once or twice. Okay, um. Mr. Viano? You're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Uh, Mr. Dwyer, would you be able to please bring up the um, the plans that I um submitted to you?
Okay, let me see what I can do here.
The Russell Street number again?
It's two forty-three.
Two forty-three, right.
See what I have here. So I'm gonna play with this a little bit to make it fit. Okay, let me see. That. See how that works.
Perfect.
So this is on its side, so it'll fit better in the uh available screen. The uh. Russell Street is on the right of the page. Uh, this is the north side of the lot, this is the south side of the lot.
Okay. Yep. So um, so just introduce myself again, my name is Steve Viano, I'm the owner of In The Green Gardens, uh, our company is a um. Landscape uh design and installation company, so most of our work is um, is or ninety-nine percent of our work's done um at our customers' houses. Um, the. I'm asking for a site plan, um, review and approval here, um, for us to be able to add some bulk material bins across the um. The backside of our lot there, so that would be about nine hundred and fifty square feet. Um, those bins will allow us to be able to um maintain um piles of. Of um, of various materials that we use, such as um, or notably in those bins. We're hoping to be able to keep um three-quarter inch crushed stone, which is an aggregate. Um, three-eighths crushed stone, mulch, and then loam. And the mulch would be undyed mulch as well. Um, so what that would do is that would just allow us to increase the efficiency of our of our crews and be able to save us time. Um, on the uh, these bins here, we don't plan on going any taller than the fence, we also don't plan on um stacking material any taller than that either. Um, those bins would be made of um, of concrete uh bin blocks. So it's a non-permanent structure, they would be just set onto um compacted base material, um, just to give them a little bit of structure and rigidity. And um, all those blocks are interlocking, so there's um, there there's uh no problems with having to worry about them falling over or anything like that. Um, and that would just be all for um, for in-house use of the business. And um. I believe that's really all that we're looking to add um here and um, open to to any questions or comments.
Where will you be parking your vehicles?
The vehicles, so we only have three, three trucks, so um, those we'd also be able to park inside the the fenced area on the ash fault.
Cause right now they're parking in the front yard.
On the side of the driveway, we we do just for, just for ease of access, but then we can begin moving those into the back.
Because, I mean, you're normally. Granted, you may have a a. Bit of a compacted site in front. Because you lost some frontage when the, from the taking. But the normally front yard parking, you're kind of reserved for like cars and tr- and stuff like that, if you, if you need to. You need to get those trucks out of your front yard, because if you can't put them in your backyard. Where they should be, then I question if the site is adequate for what you want to do.
Yeah, we definitely are able to to bring them into the back there, and um, we are working on uh acquiring another lot and in a different town as well for um. For any heavy equipment storage or for for some of our heavy equipment storage to serve as an overflow for this lot. If um, if they were in between jobs or something like that.
Yeah. Wha- what do you have for equipment right now? You said you have three trucks?
Yep, so I have um, two dump trucks and then one um, one regular truck, like a pickup truck.
Okay.
And then everything else is on si- on site ninety-nine percent of the time.
And your trailers are how long?
Uh, my longest trailer is fourteen feet long.
How do, how are you gonna load the uh aggregate on, you have a tractor there?
Yep, we were just having a machine on site. Um, e- either a um, like a two-yard loader or um, or a skid steer. But most likely it'd be a loader.
Where will that be parked in the evening?
In the, we'd also be able to park that in the back.
Outside?
Yep, yeah, I don't have any covered storage, that's uh, that's that's tall enough for that machine.
What is? What is, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
What is the status of the existing fence, what is, it's a stock- stockade and is that six? What is the status of the existing fence? What is, it's a stockade and is that six feet?
Yep, that's a six-foot stockade fence, um, it's definitely is a little bit older, but though it, um, it, it is there. And there has been some repairs made to it.
I'd call it decrepit, not older.
The, uh, wh- what are the dimensions for those, uh, big, uh, blocks that will be housing your material?
Yep, so those blocks are four foot by two foot by two foot, so they weigh approximately twenty-four hundred pounds apiece.
How far off the, uh, the property line will they be located?
Over the property line, uh, will be approximately ten feet on the, um. On the rear of the property and then would probably be approximately five feet on the, um, or proposed five feet. Um, off of our, um, the, that would be our. The west border, which would be the one, um, to the top of the, the picture.
That would. The question is, will those blocks be qualified as structures if it, if indeed they are structures? Uh, I think the side yard set, uh, setback is gonna have to be fifteen feet in the rear yard, it's gonna have to be forty.
It could be an accessory structure, it would be fifteen and fifteen.
What constitutes a structure?
Well, that's.
That's, that's the question.
Yes.
And the, the question is, it varies all over the place, Mark, uh. One of the, a swimming pool, believe it or not, is a structure. And even it, it cannot, uh, interfere with the side or rear lot dimensions. So that's, this is gonna be a question, these are big, big blocks.
But in essence, they're kind of like Lincoln Logs.
Yep. They fit together like Lincoln Logs, you're right, but they're considerably bigger than you'd see any Lincoln Log. These are, these, these do, these do interconnect, right, Steve?
Yep, so they interlock, um, there's lifting hooks in them and they have, um, there's a ridge that runs down the center of them. And that's what, uh, the weight of those block is what holds it together, so there's no adhesives or anything like that, or no, uh, no footing that those are tied to.
Yeah, they actually use these blocks in, uh, as retaining walls in, uh, salt buildings.
Yeah, I, you could also argue that he's basically pu- putting a very sturdy fence. Because his current fence doesn't, you know, hold the materials back. So he's almost building them like a sturdy fence to withstand the lateral pressures of his. His materials.
Yeah.
I agree, yeah, a lot of this has to do with the fact that it's frankly unsightly right now, and if we saw a good fence there. That made it attractive to the neighbors, I think that would be helpful.
And in putting the blocks into can also warrant, um, improving the fence or painting the fence or doing some that to help improve that. Um, I don't own the property, I'm only renting the property, but though then if I was to put up the, the blocks. To be able to then hold the material, then I would be able to, um, definitely make sure that there's. That they wouldn't have to worry about any collision into the fence with the machine or any branches or anything like that, say.
But the, uh. You, the. The box, the blocks that are gonna be closest to the fence are obviously, they could be moved, the whole. System of storing material could be you move more towards the middle of the, uh, the whole lot. Could they not?
Yeah, I mean, you could, i- if you consider this a structure. That would be, it'd be considered an accessory structure, which would be fifteen-foot side yard and fifteen-foot rear yard setback.
Well, the purpose of a structure is probably not for us to define structure, but the reason for. Uh, side yards, uh, setbacks is so that there would be accessibility to keep it clean and neat. And not interfere with the neighbors, so, uh, I think that was kind of the original purpose of. Side yard setbacks, uh, and. With the, uh, the spirit of the law, but maybe not the letter of the law.
I mean, if he's got a ten-foot clearance now, I don't think it'd be too much to move the whole thing over to the. Easterly five feet, maybe to get that fifteen foot.
Yeah.
I've got two questions, uh, what are your planned hours of operation?
Uh, planned hours are between, we would be loading between six-thirty in the morning and maybe five or six o'clock at night. Uh, but that wouldn't be constant, cause I only do have two trucks, so it would only be if, uh, if I was loading for the next day or at the morning of the day.
And at one time you did want to have, uh, some calcium chloride storage, do you use your trucks for plowing?
So I do use my trucks for plowing, um, all of our salt is, um, for this year, we're, um, we're doing only subwork. And, uh, part of my subcontract, I made sure that all the salt is, is provided and stored on site by, um, by the, by the prime contractor. So we will not be storing any salt there.
Okay.
And what about the other structures? There's a dwelling and a garage, are you using those for your business?
So the garage is being used for the business, um, what that does is that essentially just stores any fittings for us or whatnot. And, um, and that gives us a place to work on equipment outside of the weather. Um, and then the building in the front there is, uh, is a dwelling right now, that's where, where I'm staying.
I'm not leaning towards viewing this, interpreting this as a structure accessory. Or, or other, I, you know, I, I think it can be easily taken apart, it's not like a retaining wall that's. Hord in place or, or tied back with, uh, so I, I'm seeing it. And that's just, I'm not an attorney and I don't play one on TV, but I just. With the limited knowledge I have, I'm thinking of it more as a. Improvement to, to the fence to contain his materials, so I see it as an improvement. So that the fence could be maintained. And that would help with the off-site image. I don't, I guess what I don't know if I can ask is will the fence, to, to what level will the. Visual fence be improved or fixed or maintained? Or how is it now? I haven't walked it to see how well it's been repaired.
I think we've gotten some, excuse me, go ahead, Bill.
It hasn't been, I drove by, I drove through the, uh, adjoining parking lot this afternoon. And the, the fence is completely collapsed in the rear.
Can we ask if that will be repaired, if these are, I mean, can that be contingent?
You may certainly ask that question.
Yep, I can make that contingent.
And it will be, what's the decision?
That, yeah, yes, I can, um, I can repair those, those rear fence panels as, uh, as contingent.
What about all the debris that's on the site today? You've got big boulders and piles of dirt and all kinds of stuff there.
Yep, uh, that's where we're, yeah, working on being able to, to screen and sort that. So then, um, we can properly get rid of any boulders that are in the dirt and then we reuse, we reuse that dirt on our clients' properties.
Is that?
Are you bringing the dirt, where, where are you bringing the dirt in from?
Um, that's just from surrounding towns, from projects that we've been working on. Uh, that's usually, it's mostly, um, like when we rip out shrubs or things like that, it just gets shaken off of the roots, so then we're able to dispose of it. At a, at a woodyard where they use a, a horizontal grinder machine, um, and those machines can't get dirt in them, so we're not able to, um, to, to. Essentially, I have to be able to make sure that, that I send them the cleanest material possible.
Quinlan has his hand up.
It's an ongoing thing you're gonna be doing there?
I don't plan on doing that now, um, I, we, if we needed a spot to be able to, um, to transfer trucks or something during the day, we, we have used it in the past as that. But though, um, in being able to really just straight store material here is really what we're looking to be able to move the place towards.
I mean, the debris that you got on your site right now was way more than from digging up somebody's shrubs and bringing them to your property, you got. What looks like side pieces of sidewalk and foundations and boulders that are probably. As big as, uh, twice the size of a car engine there, Mr. Quinlan.
Yes, I, I don't think this is a proper, um, site plan, I mean, the, I, I've been out there many times and I've talked with Steve a few times. Um, there's a container, storage container, which would need your approval. On the, um, I guess it'd be the eastern, southern corner, um, there's been a huge, I'm assuming that's a foil. Screener there, um, the fence has been four to six months just. Over with all this debris, it looks like a bomb went off there over onto the other neighbor's property and I. Um, this isn't a, there's a lot more on site here than what's on this plan. And we had talked about that, you know, you'd have to approve that container along with, you know, the screener, I don't know how, how noisy that is for the neighbors and things like that. That's been there for months, um, as well. I guess that'd be my concern, that this isn't a, you know, proper site plan of what's been there for at least four to six months.
Wait, wait, wait a minute. Mr. Viano, can you explain what's going on there today, because what, what you're presenting and what you're doing don't match.
Something that I would like to point out too is that so past the fence line there. So about fifteen feet past the fence is still the, the property that I am renting over there. Um, or here, but though, um, there is, uh, it's a truck body that, um, I'm not. Using the, or actively using that to store anything, I did plan on putting it back onto another truck, um, in the future, but though. Those plans have changed, I'm working on getting rid of that body, because Mr. Quinlan did tell me that we weren't supposed to have that in Hadley without any approval. Um, that's actually going to a, to a snowsite in a different town, um, to be able to store snow blowers for us. Um, and then the, um, that we're part of. Why I wasn't able to do much in terms of, uh, in working on the site here was I was. Waiting to definitely become able to, to come in front of the board there to have a plan together, cause I didn't wanna necessarily be, be working towards a, a goal that wasn't very clear.
Well, working towards a goal is one thing, but having a, a debris yard is another thing. When, when will the debris be gone?
Uh, I'm planning on within the next, within the next two weeks, I can be able to make sure I can take care of everything.
Okay.
We have a comment from, uh, the health department, Ben Lippman.
Yep, just a minute. We're gonna, we're gonna listen to everybody, but there is no way decision will be made tonight. I intend to make a, a motion to extend the public hearing for two weeks, which will be the first week, which will be the. November twenty-first, and I would expect your yard to be cleaned up so that we can talk about more appropriate things on that night, like what the yard actually looks like. And if it's not cleaned up, um, the building inspector, zoning enforcement officer may, I hate to be mean, I'm just, I'm just trying to be straight out honest, I don't wanna. Be anything else but, uh, the building inspector, zoning enforcement officer may be directed to issue you a cease and desist order. If it's not cleaned up, not gonna fall around here, we gotta get this moving, because you've been. From what I understand, for the building inspector, zoning enforcement, Mr. Quinlan there, he, he's been very lean in trying to get you to clean the place up. Um, well, we gotta move forward. Okay, Mr., Mr. Whitman?
Thank you, uh, so I had received a complaint today about the, uh, location, uh, being used as a, um. Uh, a solid waste site, uh, I went out there, uh, today and took a look at it, and it did appear, again, based on appearances. Uh, that the site is being used for unwanted or discarded solid waste from a commercial activity. That is being stored or processed, and as of tonight, uh, gentleman here, uh, stated that it's being used, uh, for sorting. And that is a, a, a process, so it's possible that, um, it is, um, being used for. Uh, as a solid waste site, which would require a permit for that. Um, so you can add health as, uh, a department that is concerned with the use of the site at this time, additional. Uh, you know, work would have to be done to make a determination, but at this point, we, there is a concern, uh, for, for us as well.
Okay.
Uh, we also have from the Conservation Commission, uh, Kayla.
Yeah, I'm Kayla, I'm from the Hadley Conservation Commission, um, while there are not wetlands on your site, there are mapped wetlands. Near and around your site, so the Conservation Commission would like to see. Site plans to determine if they would need further permitting for the work that's being done on the property.
Any other comments from town board before we open it up to the public?
Well, the good news is you can probably drive your bicycle, you can ride your bicycle to work. It's a joke.
So, I, I do have one, one concern in here, and that is whether the, uh. This processing and screening of gravel is an allowed use in the business district or should be restricted to the industrial district. And that is something I think, uh, we, we need to flesh out a little bit more.
Well, if he gets rid of the place and to be cleans the site up in two weeks and it's gone. Then, and he's only gonna be storing mulch and stone and bark on there, there won't be any. He's from what he says, there will no longer be any screening of debris, correct?
Yep.
Sorting, whatever you wanna call it, so get rid of what you have and that issue will be a non-issue in two, after two weeks. Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
So if we're gonna get a revised site plan and as Kayla asked, it should show. Map wetlands, uh, in adjacent properties, I'd like to also. See a scaled representation of where his vehicles are parked. Um, I think maybe if you moved your piles. As was mentioned earlier, more toward the center and you parked on either side, the vehicles would protect the fence. Cause I feel like one of the problems here is we're not happy about how the fence looks. But you can't, if you keep piling against the fence, you can't, it's not worth fixing, cause you, your materials keep breaking it. So, you know, instead of waiting till we do or don't approve. This, these blocks, maybe you move your piles toward the center and try to park closer to the fence, just my suggestion.
Good, good suggestion, Mark.
All right. Anything else of any town board? Okay. Mister and Mrs. Public, your, who's, who wishes to speak first? Lisa.
Hi, um, I'm his neighbor to the west, and I guess one of my concerns is that one of his dirt piles was like. Twenty feet high and the weeds were probably maybe twenty-five feet high. And that was right near where, uh, the drains are, so all of my, you know, I have a drainage system, everything goes and. In the catch basin, and so it was almost like having all that dirt there changes the, um. You know, level of his properties, so all the dirt's running into my catch basin, cause he's right on the fence. So I, I am concerned that he, you know, when he's there, if he's actually gonna stay at the level of the fence, because. Um, you know, the way it is right now, it's like he's changed the whole elevation of his property and I have this dirt from I don't know where. Running into my catch basin, and I guess one of my other thing, concerns is, um, the dumpster like in the front of the building, I know. Um, you know, we always have them fenced in and he's got, I mean, he's got one in the back, but he's got one right in the front, so it just doesn't look very. Neat or clean over there, besides the fact of what's going on and the, the dirt sort of sorting out pretty much happens. You know, for hours at a time, it's, it's pretty loud, um, so, y- you know, it's just. You know, I have a medical office next door and, you know, I know Paul has, you know, clients in the back doing massage and. It's, it's pretty loud, if, you know, I don't know if it's allowed or not, but, um. Certainly, you know, piling all the dirt and then I was there power washing my building and he was. Blowing all the dirt and it was sticking to my building as I was power washing it, cause there's just dirt everywhere back there. Um, there, there used to be grass and, and some pavement, but now everything's just. Uh, dirt and sort of, um, I don't know, building materials and concrete and. A bunch of other, other materials, so, um, I, I guess my concern is about his drainages. You know, where is his water flow going and does, is he gonna have a drainage system like. Uh, Paul and I do to keep our, our water on our own properties. Thank you.
Good point.
Something that, something that I would like to point out as well is. Something that, something that I would like to point out as well is that on the other side of Lisa's building, uh, Marion Excavating has been working on the uh, the new hotel that's going up on the far side, and they also do have a jaw crusher in there as well as um, they're also working on on doing similar activities that that we do at our site here.
Well, that's probably under a construction permit, but yeah.
Are you saying that her building is getting dirty from that construction and not yours?
Well, I'm saying that um, that there is a lot of construction going on in the area, so it so it can't be solely directed at me.
Am I hearing that your processes are gonna change and that that yard will just be used for storage? Is that what I was hearing earlier that the processing of gravel will happen somewhere else offsite?
That's what my plan is.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. But when you say a plan, is the plan in your head or do you have a written plan?
That that's what I'd like to do. Yeah, I don't um, I don't plan on on uh, on screening here. Um, I just ended up having material here, so I did have to get that screened. But though um, but though that that screener that I do have here is a mobile screener, so it is, it is made to go to my client sites and we do drag that around to client sites when it's needed. So we are able to now screen on site.
Anybody else timeline for when you're going to not be screening on this site?
I'm hoping to that that would be part of just cleaning up over the next two weeks is getting rid of that, and then we should be done with it.
Well, that's good.
Okay.
You know, you want to make God laugh, you tell him what your plans are. Okay. That's a joke.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I'd like to um, my name is Paul Zaradnik. I'm the owner of two forty-five Russell Street, uh, known as the Hadley Park Plaza. And I'm very concerned about the uh, storm drainage system. Uh, the the runoff that comes off of his property onto mine flows right onto a catch basin, which is only about eight feet, ten feet off of his fence and then flows underneath my driveway right into a wetland. And uh, I think uh, it his plan, if he's gonna continue to go forward with this, should include a storm water drainage system that that can contain all the runoff that comes off of his site. Um, you know, with with the materials that he's had historically in the last two years that he's been there with the uh, soil that comes in that looks like it's heavily contaminated with construction debris, asphalt, concrete, metal, shingles, wood, that sort of thing. I don't know what's in there, but I don't want it in my, on my site, and I don't want it going into the wetlands. I don't know how much contamination may have already leached into it, but I think that uh, I would like to see the uh, Hadley uh, planning board request that a storm drainage system be installed. Lisa has one on her property. I spent a lot of money putting in a drainage system um, on my property. It's there to protect the aquifer. And it's a, it's a, it's a good thing, and I'd like to see that included in his plan is is a good storm water drainage system done by a registered engineer. Because I'm concerned about that, that one, the runoff that comes off of his property. He's gray, he's uh, cut the grade down around inside, and it all goes right towards onto my property now. And I'm very concerned about the potential pollution that I could be sustaining on my property now. Um, the noise level also from the uh, screener is uh, very disrupting to my tenants. I get a lot of complaints from them. I have thirty-two offices there, and it's it's a nice quiet office building, and they complain about it. Um, his screener runs at about eighty-seven decibels. And that's way more than the forty-five that's acceptable. Um, and so I'm glad to hear that he's gonna get that off the site. Um, but I do would like to see a request for a good storm drainage system put in. The other thing is uh, there's only bylaw does say that or it has a request in there that there should be a fifteen-foot buffer zone um, around the the perimeter, and I would like to see that buffer zone installed and a fence uh, in a buffer zone with uh, vegetation uh, to help keep down the noise and the screen. Um, all the the equipment from my building and my my tenants. Um, so that's, that's my feelings on it right now.
Okay. Mr. Vayano, on the rear of the property, is that all paved or is that basically just dirt? How much was paved and how much is, how much was grass when you moved in?
Um, I moved in in the middle of the winter, so it was still um, it was, it was all dirt. But though um, but though it's only paved, so there's, so on the, on the, if you're looking at the property from the front, the left-hand side, um, it's probably about five feet to the fence that isn't paved. And then going from the back of the asphalt pad to the fence, that's probably um, that's probably, that's fifteen, oh, it's twenty feet. And then just past that is um, is another ten to fifteen feet to the property line.
Okay.
So the rest of. You said you don't, excuse me. You said you don't own this property, you rented.
Mr. Sardenski, please wait.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Oh, that's right. It's public time.
Um, so that the most of, most of the rear of the property was grass or something you're saying?
So the rear pad, the rear past the fence is all, is all grass. Inside of the fence was was not grass.
It was not grass?
Mm-hmm. It was just dirt.
That was all, that was, that was dirt or paved?
Uh, just dirt. It wasn't paved. The paving, the, it's paved and all inside the fence though, so fifteen, so twenty feet to the back fence, and then along the right-hand side of the property is ten feet to the fence. That's unpaved. That's just dirt. Then everything within that area though is all paved.
Okay. Okay, my Mr. Sars.
No, he just said he he rented the property. You don't own it?
Yep, yeah, I rent the property. I don't own it.
Well, it looks like you got some business decisions to make. Whether or not making improvements on a leasehold is prudent.
So.
When, when did you move into the property?
I moved into the property in February of two thousand and twenty-one.
Okay. Because we can go to the uh, assessor's office and get aerial photographs of what the property looked like to the rear before that. And depending how much changes have been done, um, changing, I don't know, elevation so much, but as much as parking and non uh, impervious areas, if you would, then um, yeah, if you change the drainage profile of the property, then you definitely need to be addressing catch basins and putting something into uh, retain your own water. It probably used to be sheet floor going off to the rear of the property. And in in infiltration was probably a big part of it. But if the property has been altered and it's no longer being infiltrated, then um, yeah, you need to do something and address drainage. So that isn't going out to the neighbor's property.
Is is this qualified? Are we doing a site plan review here?
Yes, we are.
Okay, and the the.
We're doing, we're doing site plan approval, not review.
Okay, but uh, I, I got the difference. The uh, the the peer review probably is, it should come into in the play here uh, with with drainage and the concern for drainage and uh.
Originally, when we thought that the property wasn't altered and we weren't, weren't going to need a peer review because it was basically one for one, but it as it's, as it may be, things have been changed from what we thought.
Exactly right. That's, that's what I'm, I'm thinking too. So I have a question for you based on what uh, Mr. Zaradnik said, uh, construction debris. How does that fit into your business plan? You're talking about landscaping.
Yep, so we do, we do hardscaping. So we'll do like um, if we pull like an old walkway or something like that or patio, then we uh, then we'll sort out the bricks then, and we'll get rid of the bricks appropriately. And we'll get rid, and then we'll, we'll screen the loam is is the way, was the way that we've been operating.
He mentioned shingles.
Shingles, I don't think I've ever brought in any shingles.
I'm looking at the Google Map aerial view. It looks like quite a collection of I don't know, I, I don't want to call it debris, but all up against the fence line. I don't, yeah, I definitely want to see how your storage goes and how your vehicles go. It sounds like you're gonna be changing the use. Like maybe you were getting away with uh, more than we thought if it was a landscaping material storage. It was more, as we said, processing, which is not appropriate, I don't think.
Now, the the site plan approval we're working on is for a landscaping business. And that's why I said before that we'll give, he said he could clear it up and clean it up in two weeks. We'll give him the two weeks to make the place basically like his site plan, a bear lot with get rid of the debris and whatever else is back there, the storage trailer, the or the body, whatever he calls it, and the screener, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And we'll move on at that point.
Should we address the drainage issue?
Yeah, well, I, what I want to do is I want to go to see the assessors and get a map of uh, four years ago, see what the property looked like. And if property had, another thing, there's so much junk on the property right now, we can't even tell where the grades are. Um,
So I am taking.
I mean, the 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 place is a disaster.
I am taking a look at from Google Earth at the site. Unfortunately, the imagery here is, shows it uh, October of twenty eighteen, so it's uh, um, five years old.
That would be exactly, that would be exactly what we're looking for. What did the property look like five years ago?
Okay, well uh, funny, I can help.
That would be perfect.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at.
Yeah. So you see down here at the bottom, it says imagery date ten four twenty eighteen.
And you moved in twenty-one?
So this would have been hasty fence, I'm assuming.
Yep. Okay. And the property was pretty much blacktopped all the way almost to the fence by the looks of it. Um.
Like that's dirt in there.
Little bit of dirt here probably underneath those guys underneath to the right of the property too.
It's probably close on whether it even has twenty percent green.
That's another good point.
Yeah.
Especially with the taking now.
Well, if you, if the, if the, if you take the stuff off of the dirt back then and the front yard, there probably was twenty percent, probably was, even though it was dirt, it could be green if they planted the dirt there. That would be my guess. Um, but yeah, that's all hasty fence stuff.
And then I wanted to point out to that in the center of the image there, there's two um, two storage bins, and that's actually what we're proposing to uh, to install then along the back of the fence is uh, those bulk material storage bins.
Is that what this is?
Yep. And those were made out of the same material at the time that he had the lease here.
They probably didn't come before us to request permission.
They did not. And uh, to that, I have to credit uh, our current building inspector who is doing a much more effective job of enforcing change of use as a trigger for site plan approval. The uh, that was not a uh, high priority for his predecessor.
I will agree with Mr. Dwyer on that. He is much more on top of issues like this. Okay.
So it's not that we're picking on you, it's that there's new sheriff in town and there has been for a little while. Uh, so um, we're trying to attend to these things more effectively. But I I concur. I think if if grades have changed, then we need a drainage plan.
Yeah.
A professionally designed drainage plan.
Yeah, I, af- after what I just saw, they are kind of agreeing with that because you're going to be changing. You know, you're going to be putting your, your stone and your dirt and your stuff like that, while that unto itself is not hazardous to the environment. If the runoff goes onto the driveway into the drainage and into the wetlands, um, especially when um, the conservation takes a look at it, may very well in need some kind of a engineered drainage system.
Hmm.
Other comments, questions?
I just got a text that the uh, Town GIS has a more current plan. Uh, let me see if I can pull that up. Or more current imagery.
Okay.
Remind me of the street address here?
That's two forty-three Russell.
How about two thirty-three?
Two forty-three. Two four three.
Okay. Three Russell Street. Yeah, okay, that'll be. I'm having trouble pulling up the GIS, so I'll uh, put that off, but uh.
I was actually able to get it on my computer. Do you want me to share my screen?
Sure.
All right, so this is what I have right here on the GIS. Little more cluttered.
Could you show the twenty twenty-one, the twenty twenty-one?
Yep, this is the twenty twenty-one aerial imagery, and then we can go, this is the twenty nineteen, which I think is what we just had up on the Google Earth, and then this is the twenty-one.
Those material storage are still behind, that that still exists?
Um, those bins aren't there no more now.
Hasty took those.
Yep, he took those with him. I think there was like a shed and a storage container and some other things on the property that um, that he also took with him when he, when he uh, relinquished the lease.
That looks like ten pounds in a five-pound bag.
Yep, that's uh, that's tight. That um, that's something OSHA would probably be interested in.
But it's blacktopped. It is all fence material.
Okay, if you take that down.
Okay, so we've heard through a bunch of people, townspeople, town boards, and basically we will, I'll make a motion to continue this hearing to eleven nineteen at six forty-five PM.
I'll say that.
With the intention that Mr. Vayano get rid of the stuff on the site, the debris, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and a screener. And I believe you got an appointment with the Conservation Commission to come and take a look at different wetlands, potential. At different wetlands, potential. Issues, or at least closest, for lack of a better term. Um, Kyle will be out there to see where she has already made an appointment with you. Is that correct, Kyle?
Yeah, and if you'd like, you can attend our meeting next week. It's on Tuesday, the fourteenth at six thirty. If you wanna speak to the rest of the commissioners.
Yeah, what day did you say this was continued to?
Eleven. Oh, I'm sorry, eleven twenty one.
Twenty one, yeah.
Yeah, sorry about that, eleven twenty one. And. You will have some kind of a, be at least trying to contact an engineer to get a formal drainage plan going. Cause you probably won't get anything for two weeks. And as long as your site is cleaned up. And we can at least move forward at that point in time, not necessarily giving it an approval, but at least you can continue to operate. And move forward in good faith. That you're complying with what you're promising to do on the site plan.
Hmm.
If you are not cleaned up, then. Well, the consequences may not be desirable. Okay, and that's why I'm not trying to be mean, but it's just that. Um, we gotta begin moving forward and getting something really. Or a way going here, because you have. Been a bit amiss in getting what you were, were requested to do. And leave it at that. Okay, we have a motion in a second, I believe.
Yep.
Hey, any other discussion on what I, what was been discussed? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed unanimously. See you on the nineteenth. I mean, I'm, I'm, I keep saying, what do I say the nineteenth? November twenty first.
Great, thank you.
Great. Same time, same place. And we'll make sure everybody gets the, uh, a Zoom connection.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Colmia and company. Sorry it took so long, but I thought that would be a little, a little bit faster.
Okay. Hey, board, who are you? Um, so. I, I want to, um, also introduce, um, I sent. The, um, chair and, um, Bill. Uh, an email saying that two staff people from PvPC will be joining us on the call. Um, both Kyle and, um, Aiden. Who started yesterday, um, are, are new land, are, are doing the land use work. So in addition to me. Um, you know, supporting the planning boards that we work with as well as a lot of the, the various, um, tasks and. Um. Products that we've worked on over the past couple of months, they're, you know, supporting with the comprehensive planning as well as planning board assistance. As well as, um, hmm, the, the discussions about, about housing and some of the work we're doing in that, um, realm. Um, so I just wanted to, um. You know, give Aiden the opportunity to, to meet the board, um, as more than likely he'll be working with the board at some point in the future. Um, with that said. Um. What I sent the board, um. This past weekend was, um. Kyle's work on the rules and regulations based on a document that we received a couple of years ago, I think when we tried to do this initially. Um, and so it, um, is reflected, um, with the document that you have there. And in addition to, um, a scope of work that we talked about. That, um, could, you know, I think explores the idea of, um, doing some analysis. Of, um, opportunities for, um, housing, um, in. In the town and along the corridor, um, that probably could be used for a future grant application as well as what I learned. Um, that came out today was district local technical assistance. Um, to the town, so I don't know, I don't know if the planning board chair received that. Um, but, um, what I know is that, um, DLTA requests of which the housing production plan was funded through that a couple of years ago. Um, you know, presumably a project like, uh, the forty R, um, slash an analysis of housing along the corridor or possibility of housing along the corridor. Is something that, you know, can be looked at. Um, but I guess, um. You know, maybe the, the first discussion point is working through. The rules and regulations, or at least, um, having Kyle, uh, maybe speak to some of the, um. The very, the, 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 um, uh, revisions that he's made to. The, um, twenty fifteen document, and then, you know, go from there as far as. Um, this iterative process by which I think the planning board would probably provide some comment, we would turn around with a new document, and then. I think as, um, you know, what, as was presented in the email, um, this is not. The entirety of it, so there are still some components that we probably need to work on, but I think getting some guidance from the board as to. How to move forward efficiently, um, with regards to this document, I think is gonna be helpful too.
Just a quick question. Um, obviously Kyle Fennell, your name is AZ. Mr. McMahon, how do you pronounce your first name?
You're muted.
I think you're still muted, Aiden. We can't hear you.
No, I think.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, new headset, uh, came with the job. So, anyway, uh, my name is Aiden. You pronounce it Aiden.
Ada?
Aiden.
Aiden, like A I D E N or?
Yeah, I don't know why the, my first name isn't showing up, uh, but it's, it's not spelled A I D E N, but it's pronounced exactly the same. So just picture that spelling.
Okay, that's, that's my, yeah, the way it shows up like your first name is, well. I didn't wanna try.
It's my first initial and then my last name. I'm gonna have to figure out how to change that, but, um, yeah.
Okay. Aiden, thank you, okay.
Sure.
Um. Yeah, I would think we wanna get moving on the rules. And regulations for the planning board because it seems like we've been. Discussing that for a long time. And we need to get that formalized because there's a lot of things that, there's a few things that we do that. Are unwritten but are probably in those. And we wanna have them written down so that we're. Operating on a consistent set of. Rules and regulations.
Yes. And don't forget to tell people that they should do something. That we meant they should do.
Basically. Yeah. But at least it'll be written down so they can see in some place that this is how we base our decisions, and this is what we are expecting. Compliance to be. So. Cause the three of the three old timers here aren't gonna be here forever. And wanna make sure that the new people, once we're replaced, operate from. Basically the same set of rules.
So, Mr. Sheriff, uh, I may, I, I can share my screen and we can walk through the first eight pages that, um. We started revising. Of the draft.
Okay.
Uh, word document should be visible?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so let me just move everybody out of my way here, excuse me. Uh, so this is again based on a, a draft originally from two thousand fifteen, I believe. So, um. Working through just the first, uh, five sections. Um, introduction, organization, meetings, preliminary review, and special permit review. Uh, we began to bring in some texts from, uh, Pioneer Valley. Uh, kind of model, uh, format. That I believe the planning board had seen a couple of months prior. Um, so we started with. Our first additions highlighted on page three. Uh, just expanding on some of the board duties, uh, adding. Uh, subsection F, review and approve site plans when applicable. G, recommend scenic roads designation. And H, administer special rules, um, granted authority within Hadley zoning bylaws. Uh, identifying home occupation, erosion sediment control. And inclusionary zoning based on that draft, um, table of contents. Um. Right there. Um. So, uh, that's our first kind of addition, if that, um, I would like to pause here just to get a sense from the board. Uh, if that's, if those first three things are first, uh, and foremost accurate, if you can confirm that for me, and then, um. Curious if we wanna follow this format, uh, that we're outlining in subsection H. Kind of following the table of contents and just referring, um, the reader to those specific sections. Just.
That section eight will be considerably longer when you put in all the other reviews and stuff that, that we have in the zoning bylaw, that's all.
Exactly.
You're, you're just getting into us. I don't wanna try to list them all right now, but you're right.
Yes, just so, uh, perhaps just, uh, in general feedback, just thinking about, um. Yeah. It's kind of the blanket, just all applicable. Uh, statement, and then just leaving it from there, and of course, we'll just start expanding on those sections. Um, I agree, it starts to get cumbersome if we start listing everything.
Okay.
But we can move along if those look alright, um. Just some quick. Things to confirm here. Um. In section two, uh, planning board, five members elected at town elections, uh, confirming that you all are given five year terms. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Yes, alright. And then, uh, majority quorum, first meeting on each calendar is when you're selecting your officers, chair and clerk.
That, that's, that's not true.
Okay, can you verify?
Chair and clerk are elected after the town elections.
First meeting after the town election.
Correct, thank you.
I wouldn't put a date in there because they moved the town elections a couple of times, so I just maybe making that statement after the, uh, annual town elections.
Alright.
That's an annual. Yeah.
Yes, thank you. I will rectify that, uh, and then on that next, um, chair and clerk, are you selected? That's annually, so that would cha, uh, change number four.
You know, when, when this was first brought up, uh, you know, four consultants ago, uh. That's so not Hadley.
Yes.
Um. I, I think it's, it probably is just something, just delete it.
Yeah.
So strike this.
Do you delete number four in its entirety?
Alright, can do.
Well, the reason we say that is. I hate to say this, but I'll say the truth. Um, I've been on the board for forty five years. Four, I'm sorry, forty years. And I am probably been chair for thirty five of them, plus Mr. Dwyer has been on the, the board for probably. I would say thirty eight years, probably chair for thirty five of them. So, we're close, something close to those numbers.
Or clerk, yeah.
That's fair.
We have a dictatorship.
No, it's a, it's a wealth of institutional knowledge.
We're getting reelected, yeah.
Free, we have free and fair elections each year, just like.
So you say, so you say.
Uh. I mean. So, uh, move right along, um. Uh, one addition. Uh, that we, we wanted to clarify, um, we added section three point eight on absences. Uh, and this is some, uh. Language regarding, I believe it's the Mullins rule. Um.
So this was included, I don't know if the, the town has accepted this particular MGL, you know, I know some. Oh, yeah. Okay.
Right.
Oh, yeah. So when you watch the meeting on key tape, you're allowed to vote.
Yeah.
Right, yes. So then we'd wanna include this language, we'll keep that. If the board, if the board is in agreement with the text, I can zoom in for everybody if we wanna read it. Um.
No.
Yep, that's, that's basically, that's what I said, that if you miss a meeting and you watch the tape, you're allowed to vote.
Right.
But, I could say I've done that. I think I had to sign some form that I had.
Yep, we even have, we have a form for it. The, uh, David Nixon, when he was town administrator, we, this, that was when we adopted it, and he. Promulgated a form at that time.
Does that need to be, uh, referenced directly in this section, or is it?
No, I don't think so. It's certified writing, but we have a. A form for that.
Yeah, but you, you're gonna write it, they're gonna certify in writing, there was a form for it. I mean, that's, that's close enough.
Yeah, it says. At which testimony or other, oh, I see.
Yeah, we could, we could look at adding an appendix of forms to this.
True, yeah, that'd be appropriate, I believe. Um, alright, so three eight looks good and we can move right along, um. I wanted to confirm this, uh, value for the preliminary review fee. It's not included in section eight point three, which is, uh, your relevant fees table. Uh, but I wanted to confirm, um, if this value is accurate, one hundred dollars.
We don't usually charge anything for informal review.
Alright. Then we can make sure to remove that.
So I think this is also an opportunity in your rules and regulations. I don't know how the, the planning board may be looking at fees or, you know, a review of fees, um, but typically. Um, especially now, if, if, you know, we get to a point with these rules and regulations where you feel comfortable. In adopting them as the board's rules and regulations, um, putting a fee schedule in this document that may be current fees. Um, and what would you would typically do is, um, if it came time to address or revise the fees. You, you know, do something similar where you'd open a public hearing to identify those fees. They don't have to be done through town meeting, and they can be done through the planning board.
Yeah, you want to think about. Go ahead. Just a quick question on preliminary review. We highly encourage preliminary reviews. For almost anything, because it makes submission a whole lot more, uh. Smoother when people, as opposed to coming in without a preliminary review. So.
We get to say.
I'm not, I'm not sure we wanna try to try for preliminary review because that seems, it seems to me, we would be discouraging that. I guess my two cents.
Yeah.
And several months ago, we went through a site plan review on a. Piece of property off of, uh, Coolidge, Coolidge Bridge, and we spent a number of hours on it. And, uh, you know, you had to go before the, uh, ZBA, and we finally approved everything and. Hours were spent, and nothing has been done with that property. It was. Perhaps cavalier, leo, your leo, whatever that word is, brought to us. Is there any way that we can? Put a, some type of fee in place if we spend time on something? And then somebody doesn't do something, if we, if we, we've gone through site plan review and made a report.
I don't think you can, because there could be things beyond their control that. Prevent them from going forward.
Go back to four point one, please. I don't think you wanna call it informal meetings. Because to me, that sounds, I mean, the, the title is the only thing I have a concern with. Informal meeting sounds like. Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Zagrandic, and I are meeting outside of a planning board and discussing something, and that's an open meeting violation. They wanna call it. Just give it a different title. That's all I'm saying, but I, what you're, you're, your intent there is absolutely correct.
Formal review at. Public meeting or something?
Yeah, informal review would be fine.
Yeah, that's better.
Alright. Thank you, board. I will scratch the preliminary review fee section, uh, moving on to. Section five four, special permit application procedures. Just wanted to clarify that applications. Forms available strictly, uh, during regular business hours in the town clerk's office.
Uh. Generally, no, they are, uh. Available, uh. Generally, no, they are of available uh upon request. To the planning board office.
Yeah.
Alright.
During regular Zoom hours.
Yes, Zoom office hours, right, anytime. Uh number of copies for our uh special permit.
Whoa, 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 you're going too fast.
Sorry. Here at five six.
Go back to five five.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Date of submission?
So, we don't do it that way.
Alright.
That is what the law says. But um.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the the. This was something we got into with the prior town clerk, who likewise had been in the job for decades, but um. The town clerk's not equipped to review an application for completeness.
Okay.
So we ask that the application be filed. At a regular planning board meeting. So they can be reviewed for completeness. And then we. Uh then we approve. We we give the applicant the okay to file with the town clerk.
Right, and and we, we will, we will, they will, they will file with us and tell us what they wanna do. Give us the application, we will set a public hearing date, typically that meeting like we did tonight. With a person that wants to have a a very small subdivision.
Right.
And because of the filing fees, we used to have a flat filing fee.
Right.
However, legal notices have gone out of sight. And we found out we were charging half the price of the filing fee for what the the legal notice was costing us. And because the legal notices are. All over the place and changing so rapidly. I will send a notice to the newspaper, get a price. And add a percentage onto that price and let the applicant know and email them back their application. So they can then file it with the town clerk, in the meantime, the public hearing date has already been scheduled.
Right.
Okay, so it's it's a roundabout where I know that this is what the law reads. But it 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 turned into a disaster when we tried to do that. So basically, they come to us, they file, we set a date. I find out the fee, I emailed them back the application with the fee that they need to pay. Onto the application, they then file it with the town clerk and. Go forward.
You could probably work that around to say something like the application will be submitted to the planning board for preapproval. And then filed with the town clerk.
Right.
That would be consistent with, it's probably more consistent with how the statute reads to say it that way, but um. Basically, we don't want the town clerk accepting something that is incomplete. Because that starts the clock running on approval. And we'd rather catch that.
Right.
Before it gets more than a foot in the door.
And that state reg is probably designed more for towns that have a full-time. You know, trained staff, whereas we're for all intents and purposes volunteers.
Right.
So it works in Northampton where the clerk then.
Right.
Calls the planning board office and says, come and pick up the application that got filed this morning.
Right. So so uh if I, if we quickly just review that first line, a little addition there. Um if that follows with what you're saying, Mister Dwyer, and then uh just clarify, is it dated? Upon the date of the planning board meeting or is it dated?
We dated from when we approve it for for completeness.
Okay, so then.
First. Sentence say the application shall be submitted with the planning board at a regularly scheduled meeting. Or no?
Yeah.
Um I believe I've got notes here that uh capture the sentiment, so I'll I'll make sure to clean that up a little bit. I don't wanna necessarily spend too much time word smithing if that's alright with everybody.
Yep, yep. I I think what I'll add to is, um you know, I think that what has been determined to to both in. The draft that was initially presented as well as uh Bill, you alluded to it was. That there is a particular process that's spelled out in chapter forty, section nine. Um just so that the language is clear, we understand your process by which you determine the completeness. And then how you file it on behalf of the applicant, um when you know, it's time to do that. Um when you are satisfied with the application, um I think we can spell it out in the process. But we also wanna make sure that it's not saying something that is uh in conflict with um that particular chapter. So I think between Kyle and I, we can um figure out, you know, a way to to communicate that.
Okay, yeah, that sounds good.
Yep. Go back for a sec, oh, yeah, right there, uh five point six.
Right.
And electronic copies, we all, we want a full electronic set of everything.
We we don't need six standard size copies, we three will do. If we get the electronic. We only need three copies.
And that could be PDF or approved other format?
Let's just say PDF, because we don't have.
Yes.
The capacity to handle other formats.
Right.
Okay.
Portable documents format.
Okay, so three standard size and then including PDF format.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh we don't need it to fold, be folded to fit into a letter-sized file folder, some of these, especially for site plan approval, it's uh. It could be thirty pages and we get rolled plans and that's okay, we have storage and we have a a large format scanner. But um. Yeah, we really like to, we can avoid scanning by getting it in in PDF upfront.
So I think what we should also note is that with the change of some of these numbers that you probably had there before. Um there may be an opportunity in the future to amend your zoning bylaw to ensure that there's consistency. Between those rules and regulations and your zoning.
Yeah, some, this is, some of the zoning bylaws are more generic and some got into an awful lot of technical detail.
Or for, yeah, for instance, in your site plan approval section. Each application for site plan approval shall be submitted to the planning board, um and accompanied by nine copies of the site plan. So I mean, there is very specific, right, so um you know, keeping note and and I think we can. Determine where maybe these changes can be made and just keep a running list of those.
Yeah. We don't want to kill too many trees.
Not necessary anymore, is it? Um alright, so uh five seven uh filing fee just directs you to a later section. Eight point three. Uh with a table. Uh consultants also direct you to a future section.
Sound like peer review or is that?
Uh, yes. Uh believe all this is unchanged from the latest draft. Worked on previously, uh and. I believe there is one, one additional section that I missed, I apologize, uh yes, five three. Uh that is uh new texts, um just from. Uh the PvP C model that we provided a few months back, uh just defining applicant. Uh I just wanted to go over that, make sure that the board was in agreement. Um nowhere in the document was that term defined, so thought it would be valuable to uh insert that.
Yeah, there is no town planner, so you have to put planning board instead of town planner.
Yep.
And ma- make it required that all new applications be reviewed by the planning board.
Is required?
Is required.
Okay. Uh so that was. I believe all of our additions that we got through up to this point. Uh if we wanna just quickly, just um we can pause there and bring back the next round. Uh I just wanna acknowledge it is eight thirty-one, I didn't know if there was other business or if we wanna proceed. Tonight.
Good job, thank you. Moving forward.
So we'll work on the next sections, uh they're not too cumbersome and then we'll also be including. Some of the model language that we have from other communities uh in terms of. The home occupation by uh rules and regulations, inclusionary zoning. And any others that you identify that we need to bring in from Hadley Rules and Rules.
Thank you. As you haven't already noticed, uh we are probably. Different than a lot of planning boards you would have to deal with in other towns.
It's it's quite alright, uh as I said, uh in past meetings, it's it's uh. I find this is one of the best boards to learn with, so I appreciate everybody's patience and support.
You can, you can ask Mister Comey how many. For lack of better term, how many? Ways we have paved that other towns. Have, this is what we've heard, and I don't know how true this is, but what's Hadley do on that one? Um not a lot, but there are some and that that's not by design, it's uh, I'm not sure why it is.
I've been here ten years and I'm, Joe Zagrande still considers me a newcomer.
He still wipes my nose.
Yeah, when I said I was here forty, been on the board forty years, I'm only number two on the seniority list.
Quite a feat. Uh well, thank you all, uh I'll have uh the next version at our next meeting. Uh we'll try to get that to you as soon as, as soon as possible. And please feel free to reach out to me if you have any additional thoughts, if you get a chance to look at it, I appreciate your feedback.
Yep.
Thank you. So.
Ken, on the DLTA, I found that I got an email at my personal email address this morning. Announcing. The grant round, I forwarded it to the rest of the board.
Okay. Yeah, so I mean, that's an opportunity for the board, I think if there's other. Projects or um bylaws that you may be wanting to look at, I think you've used DLTA in the past. Um to your benefit, um to get some work done, um but. Um I think as I, we were discussing at the last meeting, the conversation about maybe looking at a scope of work. Um at least looking at an opportunity to understand um the development along the Route Nine corridor. Particularly related to. Um the um hotel site, um where the um. ZBA uh denied that comprehensive permit, so. You know, that where where we will be working on forty R and other communities. Um this upcoming year, um so the, you know, the scope follows kind of that lead, it's not um as. Um specific as, you know, we would probably be working with a committee in determining. Where data, what types of data sets you would want to see. Um with regards to those particular parcels and the abutting parcels and, you know, surrounding those parcels. Um but all in the vein of presumably looking at this and then. Um possibly filing or um submitting a permit uh application to um. Housing livable communities for forty R district, um but like I said. At the last meeting, it is doing the due diligence of determining whether or not that particular. Site or parcels um may be something that the planning board may be wanting to take the lead on. Uh um examining, um you know, that type of overlay. Um so that, that's what is presented in that scope, whether or not, yeah, you know, you decide to want to continue looking at. Um that particular um parcel and looking at forty R. Um that's, you know, at the, at the board's um pleasure.
I have one request, uh. We have recently uh accepted some uh immigrant people under the emergency decree by our governor. Do those people qualify as our number in our affordable housing?
I would say, that's a commercial relationship between the hotel owner and the state.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure.
And in fact, if anything, it's like Sunderland where Sunderland had housing. Had multiple apartments that were, that met every criteria of affordability, except that they weren't deed restricted. And so none of them counted.
Well, then it should be a zoning violation if that's the case.
Hotel, it's an allowed use.
Oh, it's not allowed use, no sprinklers, they're permanent residents there for at least three years. So.
Bit of transient.
I I think the state is coming in on those things and overruling different stuff, I'm not sure. What? Okay, that, I'm not sure that's a road we wanna go down either.
I I probably correct.
So I, my two cents on this is uh that I would like to keep looking at this and um fleshing out. A little more, we we have a concept of what a forty R district looks like. But as always, the devil is in the details and we. Haven't really gotten that far into the the weeds on, you know, what it would look like, apparently we can. Have some design standards, we can prescribe. Uh affordability minimums. But all of this is just concept right now, uh so I I think we owe it to ourselves and the community to. Go a little bit further down this path. To find out, will this work for us?
I I agree with what Mister Dwyer says, the only concern I have is that. Would a forty R be a required application out of this study? We're trying to, we're trying to set criteria and, you know, where is it appropriate, et cetera. But if the criteria is that out of, after we do this uh. Review, for lack of a better term, or study, okay, now where are you going to, you need to apply. I'm not sure that. We wanna commit to that, what we wanna do is study is it appropriate and where and what's the criteria. But I don't wanna be to have our hands tied that you now shall apply to something.
Well, if it's available for forty R, is it then available for a friendly forty B because or not?
Well, I think the development that was going to go there was a friendly forty B.
Yeah, but it wasn't zoned for that, so if we change the zoning to allow for forty Rs. Then it, then is it available for a forty B, is that excluded?
You can still do a forty B if there were maybe criteria. I think there would, I I I think that there would be. Pushback because presumably the forty R or whatever criteria you would set for that parcel. Um could be handled by a review by the planning board. Um, could be handled by a review by the planning board. Rather than going through the ZBA for a comprehensive permit, so really forty B is used when there's either. Hardship i- as to trying to meet the. Um, standards that would be required in the zoning bylaw, but also because you're over the ten percent threshold. You know, there may have been uh, an idea there, um, that. That presumably was um, the permitting path of that particular developer.
But Mike, in this whole concept. Uh, you're looking at forty R in relation to the Econo Lodge. But if, I'm correcting me if I'm wrong, Ken, but Kim, Ken is trying to promote a forty R. Area of zoning much bigger than the Econo Lodge, more like. Probably. The whole mall.
I don't know, is that what Ken was promoting?
Promoting it, I, he was suggesting it as a.
Was suggesting it, yes.
On a, a option.
Yeah, I think it was a suggestion based on um, looking at um, your master plan. Understanding that along the corridor and the housing production plan too, that there could be opportunities for mixed use. Um, and one of the ideas in the master plan was to discuss looking at uses, additional uses for the Hampshire Mall parcels. Um, so that was the idea of. Looking at possible density increases within the corridor, um, through this particular study. Um, obviously, you know, the, I think the conversation that you had with the gentleman from the state. Regarding forty R. Um, there's, that's not to say that the town couldn't put forward. Um, an application for a forty R district for that particular parcel, but I think it probably would. You know, be looked at differently than other towns that have looked at a holistic, you know, corridor. Or identified abutting parcels that presumably could be developed into mixed uses or housing.
Is, is the housing production plan, is that essentially Ken Comey's housing production planner?
Mike, no, it's not. We had the.
We could change, we could change the name of it.
Ken, do, do you know anything about the South Hadley where the old Big Y was?
Yeah, I just.
And how, how large of a forty R was that, did they? Buttonhole it right to that site, or did they? See, my concern is if we did a strip. A zone beyond, you know, with multiple properties, you could get multiple. You know, that would overwhelm us, and I'm not sure that would fly with the town, but I think going one by one. Saying, all right, let's try one building site. And that works and see how the town and the infrastructure and the school system, you know, s- see how that, oh, you know. I don't know, that's my.
I agree, I agree.
Mike, Mike, you're hitting it right on the head.
It seems like we've been going around this loop for. Quite a while now.
Yes, the, I, I'm not saying Ken is trying to promote it. It's his holistic approach, I love that word that he throws in there all the time.
I think it's his due diligence to bring it to our attention to consider.
Okay.
But if we don't bite the, the worm after four or five meetings, then maybe. You brought it to our attention enough times.
But I think he's getting a certain degree of positive feedback, but not unanimity. So how, how would you, how do you visualize DLTA working with that forty R scope of work that you? Proposed, can that be the basis of a, an application?
That definitely could be, um, I think, you know, one of the things that Jim had pointed out is typically with DLTA. There is some sort of. Action that the town would need to take with the work that, you know, had been explored. Typically, when that, when we did the housing production plan for the town. The um, the action was the town passed it, so you know, there is this question mark about. Um, looking at regulations or zoning that may be something that's arrived at after the process. Um, I think that that's, you know, could be just what it is, is. Possibly a zoning bylaw amendment that the town could either, you know, take or. Have discussions about, but that probably is the product. Um, I think what will end up being a good application is maybe the thought that. There would be a serious look at, you know, this possibility of. A, a bylaw being drafted and, and at least acted upon.
And while I don't think it is a clear and present danger, there is always the possibility that. A property owner could introduce. A proposal to rezone. My parcel and my neighbor's parcel into a forty R district, it would be a lot of work. But, um. It could happen, and I think part of being a planning board is getting ahead of. These issues.
So, so why can't we propose the forty R for the Econo Lodge at the next town meeting? Why do we have to go through a study determining which part of town's favorable or not? And just do it, and it, and use the educational form. As a means to introducing the town or the concept, and why would we go to the town, why do we have to keep going around and around and around?
So the, the big problem that I understand from talking with the guy from Boston is when you have a failed forty B. You turn around and do a forty R for the same site. You don't get any goodies from the state. The funding, the, the fun- funding per unit. Would come from a forty R that involved more than just the Econo Lodge. And if it did involve more than just the Econo Lodge. Then we would probably get the per unit funding for the Econo Lodge as well, but if we just try to. Do a. Uh, swap out here. Uh, it's a lot of work to do the forty R and there's no gain for it. Or no, no monetary gain for it, um.
Of taxes.
Well, they're paying taxes anyway.
Yeah, but. I just wish the work, work were away. We could move this along quickly. And it seems like the bureaucracy is holding us back, maybe I'm wrong.
No, I think you're right, they, again, as I understand it, we can't, we can't take a forty B, forty R. By law to town meeting without getting Boston's blessing on it.
Right, cuz that, that's, as Bill said, that's when you're getting your incentive.
How much is the incentive?
It's like, uh. The free. Look at my fact sheet.
Couple hundred thousand dollars, maybe?
It's, it's, it's a hundred thousand dollars upfront, and then it's based on so much per unit. If you, if you're over so many units, you get, you get more, the more units you put in, the more money you get.
So basically, you're gonna spend two hundred thousand dollars on applications, lawyers fees, blah, 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 for the next nine months.
Well, the, the application needs approval from the Board of Selectmen. The planning board, and I'm not sure if there's anybody else.
And then a zoning district that's approved by the town.
Well, the zoning district would have got to be at, after the app, that, that's to get to the, that's to get to Boston. Yeah, you, you need those two boards' approval, is that correct?
Um, I have to look at the application, I think so.
And then, once Boston says it's good, then you go to town meeting.
Well, I, I, I think the scale, uh, I, I think you're in order of magnitude off on the uh, upfront expenses, Mike.
Okay. The town, you mean?
Yeah, the upfront expenses, upfront cost to the town of getting a forty R to town meeting. Is not, what did you say, two hundred thousand?
Well, that's what the state's gonna give us, I'm assuming, so what if we said, keep your money? And just wanted to move forward, wanted to move forward with it.
Well, we can't move forward on the forty R without getting the state approval, so. At, what's the point of saying, but, but keep your money at that point?
But do we need a zoning change prior to getting the forty R?
No.
That is the forty R.
That is the forty R.
Yeah, exactly.
So we could invest, let's, let's say. On the outside, and I think it's, I think even this is probably off, but let's say we invest twenty thousand in consultants. Get approval from Boston to submit a forty R zoning article. And it fails. We're out the twenty thousand.
Yeah.
We have gone through the exercise of. We've gone through the exercise, we have demonstrated our interest. Uh, and if it, if it's not reciprocated by town meeting, so be it, we've had stuff rejected in the past.
I mean, we spent forty, we've spent forty thousand trying to study if Russell School's worth anything about three or four times already, right?
That's a different department that is. Running that show.
I'd just like to move forward with it, let, let the state, let the state talk to us, because if we don't do something, it's gonna be two or three years.
Yep, well, that's what, exactly, we're doing something and the state, you know, at some point, I believe the state will be engaged in it. It's, it's not that they're waiting, it's not that they're going to sit on their hands until they get a complete application filed. If we get. You know, get a, a sense of, uh, well, we'd really, we don't wanna do. Loes to Home Depot, we don't wanna do anything on the north side, but we wanna look at. Econo Lodge and Hampshire Mall and maybe down as far as Howard Johnson's. You float that by and see if, uh, if that's enough to, um. Generate reciprocal interest from Boston. We can go, we can go in small steps here, we don't have to.
Yeah, I agree.
We're not committing to, uh. Yeah, I don't think we're committing by, by entering the process, we're committing to follow through on the process. Uh, but it really does come down to what town meeting says.
Exactly, if you want to apply for this grant, when it, when, when we. That's my two cents.
We should definitely look at it.
And we're gonna wait two or three years to get a forty R in place.
The alternative being. What?
Putting, spending twenty thousand dollars upfront, get, get an application and then go for it.
Yeah.
We can talk to these people.
That's what we're talking about, going ahead, going ahead with it, you know, the other alternative is to float an application to allow zo- uh, apartments by right. The business district. With an affordability. With the, uh, with the inclusionary zoning applicable.
Right.
But, um. But we don't know what we would get if we did that. And that's maybe not a step we wanna make right now.
Is it possible, Ken, I don't know, to say. We're creating a forty R zone that's, I don't know, I'll just say. Uh, a hundred acres, but we only. Wanna allow. X number of units in there, I mean, or once we have that, it can be developed to its maximum potential, and we could get. You know, a thousand. Units, I mean, I think it would be a pretty crazy developer to build a thousand. Units, but I'm just saying, that's, that's, I think, the fear, is that the larger area we open, if it were maxed out. You know, we, we'd look like Framingham instead of, you know, Hadley.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the question here is whether or not. Um, I, Bill, I think, put it plainly is if the town wanted to look at additional density along the route. And not rely on incentives from the state, then presumably you would want to just rezone. Or allow for apartments or, um, any sort of, um. Multi-family along the corridor, um, you know, this is an opportunity and, you know, to look at. The smart growth districts, which ha- happened to also be mixed, uh, mixed use, which you can also spell into development programs. Where you're not going to necessarily say that one hundred percent of these parcels are going to be. Um, housing, um. Because you have design standards, you have other types of site work that would need to happen with those particular parcels. It makes it easier to develop housing, um, but. I think if there is a, a close look at. Um, certain parcels that, you know, um, not necessarily the Econo Lodge, but others. Along the corridor, cuz that's where you've identified the additional, um, density. That, you, you know, the, um, you wouldn't need to develop wholly, um, housing. So you, you could take a look at mixed uses. Um, which would imply that there are other uses that are going to be required. Um, in addition to the housing component.
What do we need to apply for a grant, Ken?
Um, this particular DLTA grant is a narrative, um, you know, a question, uh, it's. A series of questions and, um. I think as has happened before, uh, I, I think either. Bill put it together or the combination of planning board members maybe looked at it and submitted it, but it is not a. Uh, heavy lift at all, it's a narrative. For the DLTA.
Okay.
Yeah, we can take a look at the application and, uh, Ken's, uh. Ken's proposal. Just scope of work.
Yeah, that's a very general scope of work, um, in regards to doing, um. You know, examining forty R for other communities.
Okay.
Can we get you back for? Our first meeting in December? That's, uh. December fifth.
Yeah.
We'll try not to have. As much else, we, we just had a hard time reining in. And getting that guy to get his application together, so, um, we, we. Didn't wanna delay the hearing any longer than we already had, but, uh, we do apologize for.
You're, you're all alone on the fifth, and you will be all alone except for general information.
But, yeah, sure. All right.
Hey.
Well, thanks, Ken, I didn't mean to suggest you were, uh, trying to get some glory here.
Oh, he, he has, he, you know, he's, he's the, the. Deputy head of his department, he's got all the glory he can stand down at PVPC.
And Iden, what's your story in fifty words or less, you, you, this is your first day on the job?
Second, second day on the job, yeah, um, well, I, I. Yeah, I'm from Massachusetts, um, but I just got back from Texas, I was there. Yeah, I'm from Massachusetts, but I just got back from Texas, I was there for four years, I went to graduate school there and I, I worked for a year. Municipal planner for the small city of Buta, right outside of, right outside of Austin. Yeah, but, you know, happy to be here.
But a limestone.
But a limestone. That's right. I got it.
Lead article, by the way, in the, in the Boston Sunday Globe, the, the building permits in the United States. What state and what area in that state has by far the largest number of building permits? Austin, Texas.
Oh, yeah.
In Massachusetts is way, way down. And Boston is way down. But it goes Austin, Charlotte, Orlando, Houston, Dallas. Denver. Phoenix, so.
You better do a study and see what's wrong with that picture.
We better, we better adjourn before we say something wrong, or I say something wrong.
Thank you, Ken, thank you. Welcome.
Welcome aboard.
Nice to meet you all, thank you.
Okay, I do have one bill to pay. To the Daily Hampshire Gazette for the legal notice. Four hundred eighty-six dollars and sixty-two cents.
They go up every, every month.
Four eighty-six point sixty-two. That's why he says, we, we can't put a, a flat fee down because these legal notices are. Floating. You know, they used to always be about two hundred and thirty bucks, well. That's one publication now, if we're lucky.
So, motion to pay and Mark has seconded.
A second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, very good, okay. Anything else?
I have nothing else.
Anybody else have anything?
Thank you, Ken, thank you, Kyle, thank you, Aiden.
Good job, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Tommy.
Forty R in Econo Lodge.
Motion to adjourn.
I'm serious, we're all gonna be dead, nothing's gonna happen.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is history, thank you, Tom, David, oh, do you have anything, Tom? No, okay, good, thank you.